I'd like to call and order the meeting of September 2nd, 2014. Would you all please rise to the education club position?
Lord, we bow with your presence in this tonight, and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give our council members the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Becker?
Here.
Sauer?
Here.
McBean?
Here.
Schlauch?
Here.
Towne?
Here.
Here.
Lichten?
Here.
Weller?
Here.
Plaisseau?
Here.
For meeting minutes for August 19th, are there any questions or concerns? The stand is presented. No communications to read. Received planning condition meeting minutes from August 18th. Are there any questions on those? Now, with regard to your recognition of our desire to appear first, Dr. Eric Matthews from Carroll, Columbia, Harrison Environmental Group. Very sponsorship of the distribution of biodegradable leaf bags.
Good evening. Dr. Eric Matthews, I worked with, what used to be called CCA Solid Waste District. Kind of changed their name to the Environmental Group. Solid waste seemed to be used a lot of people. So, we have changed our name. Last year, we engaged in a process, can we back up? We actually coordinate the recycling program that you have going on, adjacent to this building. Very excited about that. We put the eight yard containers in recently, or in the last six months or so. Our volume capacity would indicate we're getting about 200 cubic yards of material every week. We will actually be able to give you accurate weights and assessments on that probably. By Christmas time, we're actually fitting all of our trucks with scales. So, we will weigh each container and give you accurate assessments as to how much you're picking up. Which then serves for you later on, should you want to write a grant or working with us to write a grant and show the recycling programs and how well that's going. Based on that volume, we're working with Lance, who's been phenomenal in working with us and corresponding with us about looking at expanding that program, coming up with another site that we can make available to you. All that is done free of charge. Our program right now, we have about 70 recycling sites in the three counties. 295 containers, eight yarders. Picking those up anywhere between two and three times a week. So, you can see the volume that we're really not nowhere near what we should be. Having said that, we're working to try to involve some businesses and get them involved, saving them some costs. But, the reason that I approached you tonight is to let you know that working with Lance, we have expanded program that we did last year. We did it in Salem, which we provided the city of Salem on an experimental basis with compostable leaf bags. Individuals can pick up those leaf bags. We're providing them free of charge to the city, to the village, all the city. And what will happen from there is, in lieu of buying them, they'll get these leaf bags from us, which is a savings across the board. Manpower, last year, the city of Salem knows for a fact that in manpower hours alone, they saved over $5,000 using their street department because they had to pick up the plastic bags and take those bags out, break those plastic bags because they put landfill, then collect those bags and then put them in the landfill. So, this way, we eliminate that. We're using biodegradable bags. We have worked to deal with Home Depot in Salem. Your residents will receive in their water bill a form that they will bring to Home Depot on October the 4th. That form will then be stamped, which enables them then to pick up 20 leaf bags. Any excess bags that we have left over? We're doing, this time, we're doing Salem, Perry Township, and Columbia. Any bags that will be left over will be appropriated out between the three entities and then could be later dispersed if people need additional bags. So, the plan is, is that we'll keep 75,000 bags, plastic bags, out of the landfill. And then they're compostables. So, Salem, what they did, instead of having initially, they had the vacuum cleaner around, sucked up the leaves, the people raking, then they went through the plastic bags. Well, then they were having to pick up those plastic bags, take them out, dispose of them, break the bags open, and then this way, all of that's done in one fell swoop. So, Salem actually went from having four or five people picking it up to having one or two. So, it's a cost savings for everybody all the way around. So, our plan is, is we're gonna have 75,000 bags to give out on October the 4th. 20 bags per household. After that, any additional bags that remain available to the village. Lance and I have been working on a distribution pattern as to how we can help that being done. But, that's our way of saying, we appreciate your support of the recycling program and let's take it to another step and try a different approach to helping you with some manpower and some other things. Questions for me? Yes, sir.
You say you have one day?
We're gonna do one day on October the 4th from 9:00 to 6:00.
A question.
And then after that, people can come in other days that look designated.
Question. We just did interview some more, gave out light bulbs. Have here and gave them out, the local people in town. Why could not the city or do you bring them to like this room? Deep crack, I can give them out, rather than everybody running to Salem. Some people have trouble doing that.
Well, the reason, one of the reasons we went with Home Depot is because they gave us the bags at below cost. So, we're the first day, we're gonna allow people to go there. And does two things for us. It builds a collaborative partnership with us and Home Depot. Secondly, by them doing that at that cost, we were able to buy 25,000 extra bags that we otherwise would not have been able to buy.
I understand.
And so, we expand them.
It may be a problem or something to get over that.
And it may be. So, what we're doing with Lance is we're coming up with some alternative methods. What's gonna happen on that Monday, the 6th, is that I'll call and say Columbia has 20,000 bags. The allotment that's left is 20,000 bags. How do we now help you to distribute it? So, we're thinking that far ahead. With the deal that we got from Home Depot, it made sense for us to work with them initially. And then from there, last year, we actually had five days of dispersing bags and hit or miss. One time, we had hundreds of people show up one day, nobody the next day. We tried it in three different sites. So, this approach allows us, because my office is comprised of three people, we cover three counties, plus all the other stuff that we do. So, this is one additional project that we've taken on. But, working with Lance, we have already discussed with this group of people and utilities or the road department, how we wanna coordinate and do that. So, with the city of Salem, as I suggested, the city of Salem has meet your councilman. They have that. So, people can come in and meet them and speak with them at a time that you designate. So, that's how the city of Salem did it last year. They did it in City Hall, right up front, change, just like we said. That will be something that we will correspond with Lance on. We've got another month or so to get that done. But, it'll go out in the water bills. We've gotten everything done from our side. So, just a cost-saving measure to help out, maybe to bring some more awareness.
Dr. Eric, how long do you anticipate this being a pre-program?
This is our second year. As long as your county commissioners will fund it, it'll continue on. What we're trying to do is, we are generating some revenue because of the hydraulic fracking. All of their drilling lots have to go to the landfill. So, we generate some of that money. And then what we're trying to do is put it right back into the communities that, so that they'll know.
I've seen enough state D work with these bags, that you now have to buy them in a recycling program. There are recycling centers up there that the folks have to take their materials and they're dispersed in different containers, somewhere like you have up here. But, in order to be able to do that, they have to buy the bags.
Oh, yeah.
Amazing.
There are a lot of elderly people in our community. And, you know, we're asking them to do a lot for us, you know, in a couple of different things right now. And one more, one more thing to add to that, you know, it takes a while. A lot of people are on fixed incomes. And that's why I asked that part of the question. Because I've seen that progressively slide in the door. And it continually gets built, built, built. People basically, you know, they're gonna eat dog food before they're gonna be able to buy a biodegradable bag to do their leaves.
As I understand, you're still gonna pick them up, Lance, at the street where they want?
We're gonna have some type of hybrid. I've got Jesse here, you know, that's what the discussion would be, is how could we, you know, do this and take care of the people that you're talking about?
Or you gotta run it something like you did the cleanup days? If they wanna do this, they can.
Yeah, nice and structured and...
If they wanna do this, they can. Not, they'll still pick them up?
That's the idea right now.
Or you won't go back on that?
No, it's a, it's, we can do a hybrid. You know, it's, you know, either keep it the same here or go all bags and all in between.
But, I won't vote to go all bags.
Sure.
It's too hard on them, too many people to... You need two people, one person to hold the bag and then...
When the load needs down, can we pick them up and put them back in the truck?
Take them out to JDS right now?
Yes. Yeah, I mean grind them up and make mold down or whatever.
So, we're talking about tranging them, bringing them to mold versus bringing them back to the landfill?
No, they're still going to JDS. Yes.
We use it, no bags.
They just sweep them to the curb and then we come by and get them.
But, it will help with the leaf blowing, like it's wet, people new radio. Might see benefit of it, because how many people complain about that?
Right.
We pick them up late, do weather.
I'm okay with a hybrid program, but not switching.
Yeah, we're not making it mandatory or anything. And since 1993, the solid waste district has been doing programs. The only thing we charge for, we actually spent $385,000 this year collecting recyclables. We will go in the whole 285,000. We get $100,000 back for the recycling program. I think it was paying off. What's that?
Didn't pay enough?
Well, from our standpoint, because of the cycle, because of the, because of the contract that we have, and they were the only, it's around about $385,000 a year. We get, we generate back about $110,000.
What goes to the rest? Does it go to landfill then?
What's that? All the recyclables that we pick up are sent to a MRF facility and recycled.
Everything's used, not the ghosts of landfill?
Nothing that we pick up out of those blue containers goes to a landfill. 100%. Matter of fact, we just started taking accepted containers, which we never took before. Those would have gone to the landfill, but as of July 1st, everything that we have, that Kimball picks up out of those containers is recycled.
And one thing you don't pick up, people ask why they can get rid of latex paint. Have you ever worked on anything with latex paint?
Latex paint is not, it does not toxic to the environment. It can be dried and put into the landfill.
Okay.
Only thing that we will charge for is the EPA is mandated because of the materials that are in televisions, that we have to charge $10 fee to take those televisions. And then we have to pay that to the EPA. So, everything that we do has been generated either by tipping fees, people throwing garbage away, or by the $100,000 that we generate from the recycling. And landfall, windfall for us is because of now, because of the drilling, all of that, drilling solids, drilling lots have to go to the landfill. That's where they're going. So, we're generating some additional income, which enables us to expand it further.
Yeah, I'm fine with this, as long as it's 100%. You have one question. Maybe you empty the sometimes the containers that don't empty out quickly?
The containers right now being emptied, uh, three times a week unless if that falls on a holiday, like today. Yesterday was a holiday, so they pulled Saturday, they pulled Friday, and then again Saturday. Then they'll be back on the regular schedule tomorrow. We monitor those containers all the time. If there's a situation where the overflow, we actually come out, pick up the illegally dumped stuff, somebody dumped something, and then we clean up, try to clean up the materials behind there. And with the expansion of the program, how we're doing.
Are you ready for consideration for curbside program?
Curbside program is something that we would be interested in discussing with you if you're interested in doing that. What that would require you to do is franchise out and have one hauler. Because if not, you're taking your regular truck and you're sending him around to pick up non-recyclables, and then a second truck to pick up recyclables. If you franchise it out, you would have one individual and you could do it that way. We also, in response to the councilman's question about cost, we have been working with Kimball and other companies to see if they would offer a reduced rate for elderly people who might only have one bag, or half a bag, because they're recycling the rest. Naturally, they're in the business of making money and taking those materials as a solid waste. So, but that's something that we're fully aware of and we're working on from that standpoint. Curbside is great. In some cases, we can provide you with the containers to do that. But, then you have to turn around and franchise out and say, we might have one person that's gonna do all of that. Then we would contact you with a recycled materials facility who would take those materials from you. Some cases, they would buy you, in other cases, it would just be a flat rate. So, every contract is different. But, we do have some entities that are doing that. Carrollton's been doing curbside for eight, 10 years.
If you do the bags, how do you, how do you tell the difference between a regular bag and a biodegradable bag?
Biodegradable bags are probably waist-high, brown, they'll have the Home Depot on them. And they would stand up to three weeks. They can be outside three weeks before they start their processing.
So, there's, somebody else can't just throw their bag out there because they've been like on Home Depot?
And that would be an alternative date that individuals can do. Last year, we did it 1st of October, and the leaves were a little later. So, we extended the program. Actually, the city of Salem gave bags away until Christmas. Because they're their bags, we don't want the bags, we're willing to give them away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Chris Ryan, and Dave King for our data regarding the water treatment plant update.
Good evening. Thank you for the time this evening. We're here to get a brief update on the status of the water treatment plant project. And we intentionally kept the presentation short, giving plenty of time to ask any questions you may have. In recent weeks, we've completed an update of preliminary engineering report, PER. That was at the request of the USDA this past spring. They thought, they felt enough time had passed, enough things potentially had changed. They basically wanted us to see that, to have that entire report fully updated. And we've done that. The conclusion of the updated PER is that the new water treatment plant remains the recommended plan. Now, along with this PER update, we also took a look at the future water demands originally developed back in 2005. We reevaluated those based on the current conditions and information we have at this time and the current expectations looking in the future, going years. I don't expect you to drill down in this table, but the overarching of our future water demand predictions are shown at the very bottom. That basically rolls up to 2.47 million gallons per day capacity. That's a peak day capacity being needed in a 20-year outlook. Now, if you remember, the current plan and the current recommended water treatment plant is a 3 million gallon per day water treatment plant. So, at this time, we're seeing a little bit lower predicted water demand over the next 20-year period. So, where does that put us? Again, the current design is a 3 MGD water treatment plant. And so, you know, the current option might, the current situation might be to try to maintain that 3 MGD water treatment plant. The problem is, at this point, once we submit the PER, we would not expect the USDA to support a 3 MGD treatment plant because our predictions for water demand are less, roughly 2.5. You recall, the most recent construction cost is $17.4 million. If we did pursue that course of action, maintaining the previous course of action, we would be able to get this turnaround, we believe, with the USDA and help for bids in January of 2015. I should caution that it's very reliant upon the turnaround time by USDA. Because we can, we can get it to them, but then they have their own process they have to go through. And they have to coordinate with Washington, UC. And sometimes that process takes longer than you would like it to. We believe this time, based on the lower water demand projections, we should consider option number one, which is to rerate the water treatment plant designed to a 2.5 MGD plant. We would propose eliminating the valves and raw water mains. And we would redesign the clearwell to try to cut some costs out of the project. We see potentially as much as $2 million being reduced in the construction cost. We see the pros of this approach would be that we can get it to EPA pretty much in a few weeks. We can get it immediately at that time to the USDA for their re-review. And you would effectively still be able to run the plant at a higher rating once in the future you go back out and construct the wells and water mains. So, essentially, the next steps would be just having the city's concurrence with the recommended PER update, which is for a 2.5 MGD water treatment plant. And immediately thereafter, going ahead with the resubmit of the plan to the USDA and the Ohio EPA. Once we obtain their approvals once again, and once again with council's approval at that time on authorization, we will go out for bids. Again, I wanted to get plenty of, plenty of time for questions.
The grant remains, the grant money remains at?
Roughly 4 million, I believe. Oh, just over 4 million grant money. It would not change.
So, now they just have 11?
Yeah. I don't remember the exact number.
He just had it there.
Well, 11, 11.3. Yeah, that's, that's estimated construction cost. There are other costs that are fixed and have been fixed for several years. Where we left off earlier this year, USDA as an organization was gonna have to go back to DC and get a few more million dollars for the funding package. So, to our knowledge, they have held off on doing that in the, in the EPA. So, that's why it's definitely step number one, is getting that PER back in their hands.
So, without looking back, what was the amount we would need before you just...
It was 17.4 plus, because you were technically, you were refinancing the previous sun car.
21.
So, it was around 21.8?
22, actually. That's what we're at now, the RFP. The total project cost was 22, just over 22.
And now that will be?
Roughly 20 million, basically, because of those other fixed costs that are in there would now be reduced.
So, you basically distributed $2 million?
About 10%.
And that basically is all in the water wells and water lines?
Correct. And the redesign of the clearwell?
Why are we building the same size plant overall? Do we change that to pass it?
Next question?
That's it. That's a great question. The vast majority of costs in this new construction are pretty fixed. Reducing the, essentially, the treatment tanks, the clarifier and the filters, from a 3 MGD to a 2.5, you know, I don't wanna say it's a rounding error, but it's not gonna reduce substantively the building size and save much money. Most of the money is in a fixed structure for building offices and restrooms, pump rooms, chemical storage rooms. All of those things remain the same size, whether it's the 2, 2.5, 3 MGD plant.
Did you go over the building and all those things you just named and see if there was any ways to cut there?
Yeah. Yeah, we actually did lock ourselves in a room a few weeks ago, individually. And we both, we challenged each other to see where we could cut off.
How much should we cut?
Well, could we really focus it on this 2 million?
Yes, that's the will.
Yeah.
But, did you cut on the building and that type of thing?
There's nothing to cut on the building. There really isn't unless we start sacrificing functionality. I mean, there are a list of other things across the plant that I don't have to disagree on, but there are other functions associated with water department. You know, those were on our list. I guess we do have a...
There are non-capacity type components to the overall project work that, you know, don't affect or could be sliced off that wouldn't affect capacity. You'd be taking the cost off, but then you'd be deleting components of the work that the city also needed. There were important infrastructure improvements that were related to it, such as garages and...
Yeah, the maintenance garage is one of them. It's a three bay maintenance garage on one side, one wing in the building. And then there was a two garage bay on the other side that's intended for future filters to expand the capacity of the plant. So, those could be looked at if we're trying to cut more costs. But, there's a loss in functionality associated with that.
It seems that a lot of those kinds of things, reducing capacity, probably don't reduce the cost very much in constructing. Because if you go from a 12-inch pipe to a 10-inch pipe, the cost of installing and everything else is much greater than what you save in the cost of the pipe. It doesn't really seem like kind of that much impact. Same thing with, you might save money by going to smaller capacity pumps or something like that, but you don't save tons at all, you save $2.
Exactly.
So, to get the right, and I want to keep going over this, in six months, you changed nothing but changed the water lines and the wells?
That's true. Most of our efforts been to rewrite the PER and basically reevaluate all the potential alternative water sources, which is a requirement of the USDA. We need to go back and redo that and make sure that nothing changed with your potential alternative water suppliers. And you'll be able to see that in the updated PER.
Didn't we ask for multiple different choices?
Plant could be made smaller and then added to?
We, we, we looked at three or four different options that we were gonna be looking at.
We, through this whole thing, we've looked at the 3, and a 2.5, and 2, and then 1.7. 1.7.
Yeah, and it's hard to understand without, certainly, we have to come out for a workshop to show you, as I know, I can, first, I'll go ahead and explain it, but it's very hard to see. Going from a 3 to 2.5 to a 2 capacity, your main treatment processes are the clarifiers and the filters. And the way those are sized in EPA standards, the existing clarifiers, I believe, are 40-foot diameter for your 3 MGD capacity. Going down to 2.5, it only drops the diameter by four feet. So, you know, we could start picking away at that, but fundamentally, you have almost nearly the same surface area of the roof. You still have the same walls, you're closing it, the same masonry walls. It's, you know, pinching pennies to fundamentally restrict your capacity. It could be done, but it'll take a lot more time to get it back on the street.
A question off the size and maybe map can, or will the Whitmer well be able to be used after this plant's in?
I don't know that. We hope to, with a larger capacity area and some chemical injection points in the raw water main. We're hoping to, but nobody can guarantee that.
That's the intended design.
That it will be local?
The USDA, they told us to look at the PER, definitely, and look at... They didn't just say, I think it's small, or re-study it. I don't think, something about redesigning the whole thing?
Yeah, that's the, they basically asked us to do the preliminary engineering report.
Right.
And, you know, look at those other alternatives that we give back in O5.
And they were, what do you mean in O5?
You know, look at our alternative water sources. You know, do we build any plant? You know, are we buy water from other?
Other waters, producers. But, there's no other plants in the company that are built on a cheaper diagram than what this plant is, this cheaper way of building the plant?
Well, sure. First, it starts with the water demand. And then it, what the water you have and the water you want to drink. And what we're, what we've designed for you is a plant that's consistent, will give you consistent water quality as compared to what you have now. So, there's, there's other ways to go, but it would be aesthetically, there would be a difference in the water.
Different way of softening it?
No, no, there's, it'd be different to the palate, potentially a different hardness. It would not be the same to the end user. There's less costly treatment, but you don't end up with the same product.
What kind of a product do you end up with? The lean-to or water?
It could be higher in the, in iron or magnesium, it could be higher in hardness. It could have a different taste on the palate, quite frankly. If you've gone to, you've certainly probably gone to other communities and had well water that's not treated at the same, to the same degree this is. And, well, I don't, maybe it's just me. I can tell the difference when I'm in different locations. I can tell if it's surface water. I can tell if it's a high iron, low water that isn't going through the filters.
What does this plant cost versus a surface water plant?
Well, surface water plant would be more. Yeah. The operating cost would be available, but you have pretty comparable processes in a lime treatment, a lime softening plant, as you do with a surface water treatment plant.
Matt, how do you feel about, what's your?
About what?
About what he's saying?
You mean changing the treatment? I mean, if you, if somebody back in the thirties decided to lime soften the water, and to me, it's, it's good water. And if we go do a different treatment, it's gonna change the taste of the water. It's gonna change the taste of it. So whether you spend ten million, fifteen million, or twenty million, and you change the taste of the water and everybody hates it, nobody's gonna be happy.
There is one side of the potential issue that had in changing a treatment process. That water now has a different chemical composition and will also affect your distribution system. You're gonna potentially lead to problems with the distribution.
It's a different stability and it could actually cause deposits on the pipes for decades and decades to be stripped off. We've seen that in different places. In fact, we had that problem in Wyndham. They had chosen to, to go to a pressure filter ion exchange softening. And then they had previously had lime softening. And after the first year or so after the transition, it was, this language all held right loose and now.
Our pipes don't build up with this?
Well, they have, they have some a thin layer scale one of those.
But, yeah.
And then he's right, but what he's saying, I mean, you know, when you lime soften, it raises the pH of the water. And you do deposit a thin scale, which is good. That's why we don't have as, we still have water main breaks, but we don't quite have as many as a lot of people do. So what he's saying is absolutely true, because it's gonna make the water a little more aggressive.
I just understood, and I think you may have seen the same thing, with it's gonna be a redesigned plant rather than just dropping something.
I thought it was the options.
Yeah, I did too. About plants that you could build this and then add on in ten years and that type of thing is what I understood we were gonna have.
It still has all the same flexibility you should expand in the future.
Yeah, but it's, it's big to start with.
Well, remember, just like the examples made of a very modest cost, just between twelve inch and ten inch. That's the other thing that would be very difficult if we were to look to save money by reducing the pipe sizes within the building and target that. And that's a big cost. Dr. Long's pipe is very promising. The catch is if you do that, then when you go to expand the plant, now all of your pipes are undersized. And you can't expand this plant. You basically have to gut it in the future to expand it to higher capacity. So, again, I know it's, it's a tough sell, but one of the reasons there's such a huge amount of fixed costs is because you're starting from scratch.
And you don't run a plant longer and steadily increase its size? More hours per day?
That can come into play.
Sure. Build a smaller plant and run it.
Then it's a trade-off with your labor costs.
How many hours a day we pump down? I don't know.
Sixteen.
If you pump twenty hours a day? If you had to expand.
Yeah, that's just the, are marketable and do you have no maintenance? You know, it's not gonna be maintenance work.
Does this plant still have all of those extra maintenance things that build into that cost?
Yes.
Those can be removed out?
That's at the city's discretion.
But I think that wasn't a part of what we're supposed to.
That was one thing we wanted to look at, is we had in here changing door knobs and everything.
And this is that one, the college one?
Yeah, that's the water rig study. That was, that was the.
To figure the cost.
Yeah, the art cap, rig study, moving forward. That wasn't the, that wasn't my plan.
I wasn't studying here before, so a little late on, but part of it. Would you come up with the engineering for, would you figure it on a twenty year expansion?
Yes. That's a typical planning cycle. The structure, the structure's fundamentally considered a fifty year life. So when you do a cost analysis of the value of what you're building, the core structure, the concrete foundation, the masonry walls, the shell of the building is typically considered to have a fifty year life. Other components have anywhere from a ten to a twenty year life, assume the cycle with normal maintenance. That doesn't mean that it's gonna fall apart at year twenty. It just means that's, that's how you evaluate, evaluate the cost of these things. So again, in this case, we're not adding a process onto existing plant. And we're, we're starting with an open field, a green field. We're starting from scratch. There are no support facilities that we're starting with. There's no offices, no chemical storage. This is a brand new plant from scratch, and it's gonna have a high core cost to it. That's why, again, changing the passing doesn't lift this cost in a huge way. I wish we could make it better, but, you know, you have to have those fundamental four parts in the project. It's not just building clarifiers and filters. Everything has to be on the code, maybe it's, you know, just little tiny little offices and a little outhouse. Everything has to be component.
I guess, what's got me concerned is for, so you folks all know me. I'm gonna go out and spend a lot of money to buy a lot of blowbottles, and then we're talking about past the time that we got the date on. Now we're sitting here talking about a forty year load, making something we're planning on lasting twenty years. So I realize it's gonna last longer than that. And to save a half a million gallons a day, we wanna save two million dollars over a forty year period. I don't, some of your lots are already the lead, but I'm wondering if these numbers jive. We wanna save two million dollars today and only for twenty years, we need that happen.
That's strictly on the wells and the pipes going over from the first year. It's not in the plan.
Okay. The other problem is that we originally proposed that fourteen million total. Now it's at twenty two, so it's not two million. It's eight million spread.
And how much? We're totally cutting back two million now, correct?
Well, that's what he's suggesting, but we're suggesting that there were other options.
So the total cost is twenty two million?
Twenty if you go with the smaller size.
Twenty if we go with the smaller size.
Right.
Assuming?
Right.
Okay. I guess my concern is, is I'm gonna sit here and vote one way or another on something that my great grandchildren are gonna be paying us for. I certainly won't be finishing off.
And just to clarify, if water demand paces consistent with our predictions, and if at year twenty, you're actually at a peak demand of two point five, the plant's already built in to run at a higher rate, once you build the wells and the water main, and then just submit a letter to the E P A asking for a rerating. And that core structure is already good to run up to three, roughly three M G D. At whatever point in time you exceed three M G D, again, it's primarily a matter of building the additional wells to give you that raw water capacity. And then you've already got the core structure. You only even have to add the additional clarifier and filter at a very nominal cost to go beyond the three M G D.
So spending the extra two million, we're gonna get just a lot, not a lot more, but quite a bit more?
Well, just the wells and plant.
Yeah.
The two million is.
That you don't need to have eight, or maybe in ten years.
Do you agree with that, Matt? I mean, do you think it's something that's not needed right now?
It will, it will be needed. I mean, now, what's it gonna cost you in ten, fifteen, twenty years when you need it?
How do we know we'll need it? When did you do the first study that said that we needed the three million gallons?
Two thousand six.
Two thousand, two thousand five, two thousand six is when the initial year.
Eight years, it's eighty five, fifty percent.
Right. It's increased. Correct, yeah. And what's, what's happened is the change in economy. If you look at the number of buildings that you were processing in two thousand five or six, which was one of the factors that was looked at in the, of the water demand. Things were really booming here in that timeframe. And obviously, most everywhere in the United States in the world since two thousand eight has been flat, so.
We're just saying, we did, we looked at the vulnerable areas. We, we took the zoning map and.
Go back to the table.
Matt looked at, you know, the areas of where we, you know, thought there might be development, and I did. And I looked at, you know, showed it to Bob and held him up to the light and pretty much, pretty much the same. For example, you know, in twenty years, you know, we might be moving west out of Selina or, you know, potentially here in the Gulf course and looking at those, those areas and kind of giving of, you know, what percentage build out you might expect this to be. You know, we didn't say it was a hundred percent, even though, you know, I'm guessing the Gulf course would be too close to it. And the Selina is, that, that probably industrial part is already a hundred percent or a hundred eight. In twenty years, it's very well, city runs could be out there.
There, this is the table that Lance is discussing. We, we took a look at each and every zoning category and area in town and did the best prediction we could based on all the information available right now. Cross-referenced population projections and looking back and forward. And we went through this process several times, actually. One of the things we took our time with over the last couple of months is doing, and we're doing this to try to build a level of confidence. And this is, this is what we've come up with at this time.
So the total people, those are new additions or just that's capped?
As additions, additions to current.
So we approximately have seven thousand now. You're saying that we would be two and a half miles this size, approximately. Like, just I'm looking at the, I guess the residential ninety, ninety eight hundred. So the city would cover two and a half hundred.
Yeah. The, the projected for twenty thirteen is actually. That's actually, that would be the two thousand additional, no, that's a two and a half, I'm sorry. I'll take that back. This is total people in twenty thirty four, if you add a hundred percent. Sorry. You'd have an additional thirteen thousand people if you built out to a hundred percent in twenty years. But that's not, that's not what we assumed though.
Right.
It's a small fraction of that. Actually, the presumption is that, or the, the predicted number based on.
What's the predicted number?
Valuations.
Well, what, what we did is we, we developed the water quantity and then we discounted, I think it's the second to last column on the right.
Yes, this is the design development here.
Is the assumed percent development. So that's where it gets discounted from theoretical build out to something less than that in a twenty year outlook.
Assuming six hundred condos would be built if ours didn't work? Seventy five percent, eight hundred and ten?
That's total people.
Thirty nine percent. The R one, Chris?
No, it would be the R three. I think you're referring to the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Condos here. There would be a total people of eight hundred and ten were projected in twenty thirty four with a hundred percent build out. They're saying seventy five percent by then.
So ultimately, in the last panel, that rolls up to another, you know, fifty thousand gallons of water a day in, in.
You can't give me an amount of people you think will be here.
I actually can give you the number that was calculated here. It's just that I'd have to actually pull up the spreadsheet to, to pull that number out, so. I do have that about kept back calculated in here. I just can't get to it right from the moment.
I mean, is it, just in your mind, is it ten thousand people?
No, no. I believe it was closer to, with these percentages here, it's closer to maybe an additional four thousand people in twenty years. That's rough, very rough, you know, based on my recollection. Because the total would be, if it was a hundred percent, it would be thirteen thousand additional people.
Just a minute.
Yeah.
I think this.
And then with those people, those people are, you know, when you, when you calculate industries, you know, if we get a couple of industries in town that are using water, that is a full of the hexamillion people.
Well, that's factored in there too, though, under manufacturing, light industry, right?
Yeah.
Now, you're saying the basic plant, the building structure. Because the only make, the difference between two point five million and three million is piping and wells. The, the basic plant that we're, you're proposing is a two point five. What makes it a two point five is the, the lack of wells and piping, right?
Essentially, we're recommending non-performing the wells and piping to reduce the project cost by two million at this time.
Okay.
And downrating the capacity of the plant.
But that's what's downrating the capacity by not doing the wells in the plant.
Correct. And effectively, on paper, it's still capable of a higher capacity. You just would need to build wells and, and water main, which was true with the previous design too. Because it, it's still, to get to three, you were always going to have to build more wells, up to three more, three more additional beyond the two.
And the building itself has two big rods. It has capacity for expansion.
Yes. That's part, it'd be a little tricky to delete, but that's built into it.
The last one, like.
Right. In, in theory, you could double the plant in twenty years, double the plant capacity without building more building. The way it says on the, you just have to build the clarifiers, and then it's, it's preference whether they're outside or not.
One of the things I think you said earlier was that this plant, basically you're saying plant design for three million, that we had four thousand, but it'll change. If you were to redesign the plant and say, let's start, you know, say we're only gonna need two million or two and a half million, and redesign everything in the plant, believing that is just asking, how long would it take to do that kind of redesign? How long do you think it would be for that to be out of the street for this?
I think that the longest amount of time within the total timeframe, simple answer is, I think it'd be a year. And the reason being is, no matter how fast we turn it around, you would have to start from scratch on all the code reviews, the regulatory reviews, E P A, building departments, all that would have to start over again.
So this, that, if we go that route at this point, it would essentially take an additional year, probably beyond getting things out to December or January, February, which is if you had on there in two thousand fifteen. So it'd be probably sometime two thousand sixteen, if we were lucky before we did this like that.
That's about right. Yeah, I would agree with that. Plus the engineering cost.
Yeah, plus the engineering cost.
That calculation, thirty five people cost fifteen dollars and ten cents per unit.
Those numbers. Yeah, our cap numbers would have been better for it.
Well, he had so much stuff there. He's the guy that had replacing door knobs, door latches. He had a great thing with his numbers. Figure voltage after maintenance and so on. At sixty million divided by two and a half percent for years, fifty two thousand, seven sixty four million per year on sale.
So you're sixteen million.
It seems like not even a sense of margins, if you decided to grow wells. And that two million is gonna watch that, ten million or sixteen million, six, seven, ten million.
We went over a lot of potential things, you know, you know, even with just the pinching pennies to sacrifice stuff that you regret ten years from now, you're gonna go back.
That's really difficult, but a design of a plant, I think.
Yeah, if council's in agreement with that, we anticipated changing the structure. Yeah, I apologize. I didn't, yeah, I didn't get into the, the document structure and the industry issues.
If you haven't changed the price of the plant, why do you think it'll come in not what it did the last time way over? That part of it.
We did, we did look at various components of the plant to come up with different costs.
I thought it was just the wells and the pipeline. I thought it was just the wells and the pipeline.
Right. We looked at other things, but it was not adding up to the subsequent difference.
The last time it was bid, excluding the wells and the pipeline, that would come in the same probably. Why do you think it would come in at this figure this time when it did it the last time? Don't follow me?
No.
Well, it's supposed to come in at 12 million and come in at 22 million.
People are saying it's going to come in at 22 million again.
You're saying it's going to come in the same thing?
Our estimate this time, if we rebid the same thing right now, just put the package back out, our estimate is 17.4 as a construction cost. But if we, I apologize, is that the question?
Do you think it'll come in at that then?
That's our best estimate. I can tell you the bidding climate has been pretty good. I can tell you, not just us, but a lot of our competitors are seeing prices above and below. It's like, it's very tricky to find out, to figure out where the bids are going to be. We've had just as many bids spot on as we've had 10 percent under, as we've had 5 to 6 percent over. Don't know if it's geographical issues or capacity issues with a lot of work on the street the last year and a half.
So the first estimate was this, flawed, to start with them, the estimate.
I don't think it reflected the bidding climate in this corner of the state at the time of this project.
Is that a figure you come up with, Lance, about $15 a month?
I did not, I did not, I haven't just followed you guys.
What's the interest rate, Andrew?
Chris, do you remember the financing terms?
It's just over 2, I believe, for the loans, for the USDA loans, I believe it was 2.375.
I think it was 2.5.
Somewhere in that range, yeah. And those are already fixed rates that will not change. The only thing that we don't know is with any additional loan that USDA would issue on this for this to support the project, we don't know what that rate would be. Likely, it's going to be closer to 2.5, because I knew that it was going up when we last talked about it.
I watched a few days of that.
Yes, yes.
Can we get a copy of that sheet?
Absolutely. We'll leave it on that.
The whole presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Your cost, does that go up, finish this out?
Not according to the USDA. You asked me...
That's a good answer.
You raised the cost once on the stuff. You came back a year ago and asked for it before you came down, right? You'd come back a year ago before we bid out to ask for a big increase in pay.
Right, our contract does have a 4 percent adjustment every February.
And there'll be no more cost.
That's the way the contract's written.
I say yes.
Of course, we haven't gotten this 4 percent adjustment, but that's another issue.
Anyone else, is there anything to say about that?
Thank you, gentlemen.
I just have a brief question first for Lance. I think Lance, you mentioned that when Norfolk and Southern is going to do the work on their railroads, that they intend to close all three crossings at the same time. And they haven't done that yet, but I know they did it yesterday in Salem. And so they're probably not that far off as far as we're concerned. My question to you is, did you consider consulting fire chiefs with a possibility of what you would do for fire protection on the south side in the event of closing off all three railroad crossings?
Sure.
My suggestion is that, I think you said that the time frame of the closings would be in the order of three hours or so. It could, of course, knowing the time of day that they'd be working, the type of work they'd be doing, that could expand anywhere from three to god knows what, maybe eight hours. But my suggestion would be that you consider, if you haven't already considered this, putting one of our fire trucks on the south side on one of the city properties. There are, I can think of at least three sites that would be available. The baseball field, the new road at the water plant, and also the driveway in front of the 40 and 8 building.
Ron, we did that on August...
We already did that last week.
We did that last week. I mentioned that on August 18th, I believe it was, it was a Monday. You know, we always, you know, think about safety. And they were going to close the crossings on the 18th. I believe that was the day, I know it was a Monday. They were going to do that, all three crossings that day. So we did have a fire truck on the south side of the tracks at record industries. They offered to allow us to park a truck there. And we also had a police car on the, on the south side of the tracks. And EMS also took measures to make sure everybody was safe on the south side. And we intend to do that forward.
Okay. As long as I'm here, I would like to make another comment. This water plant project, as you'll know, started back in 2005. And we're still vassaling on what we're going, what we want to do. I think the gentleman tonight, Marquess, presented a perfectly reasonable position, our way to proceed. And in doing so, it would save $2 million. And also, it would still allow the plant to be expanded if and when needed at a nominal cost. And I got the impression sitting back here, and I don't know, maybe some of the others do, that there's a lot of nitpicking going on here. And I feel that somebody on council, or all council as a whole, needs to sit up and and make the recommendation to proceed one way or another.
Can I answer you?
When I'm finished.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see the need for further delay. And I certainly think, I know Matt back there would be in support of getting this thing going because I don't want to see it go another nine years before it. We've gone from $14 million to 20, possibly 20 million now, less the $4 million grant, less the money that we've already spent in making other improvements such as the power being extended out to the, up to the plant and other improvements that have already been made and paid for. So my, I'm a little bit at sea at why you people are not proceeding with more due diligence.
Now, can I answer you?
Yes.
Please stay there while I answer. Because I'm looking at what it's going to cost you and everybody else sitting here. With the plan we had the last time, it was going to be approximately $22 a month added to the base water bill you have. And I think that's a lot of money.
I agree.
Okay. Now it's down to $15.
Well, I thought it was $11. The last, the thing, there was going to be an $11 surcharge if both down in the water bill.
There's going to be another raise. Do you want another raise of $12, or do you want us to try to whittle it down to $4 or $5? That's what we're nipping about. If we didn't care about money, we wouldn't have smoked it last time.
Furthermore, the Doolitle alley, I don't think we wasted the time. You got up a $4 million grant, you just received that grant about two years ago. And that took about a year and a half to get. Without wasting, when you say wasting that time, we wouldn't have that $4 million. So I would suggest if I doing this for $4 million ahead, and you've got $8 million more reasons why we should be doing that.
You don't have that $4 million yet.
We do.
You had it in the bank, you got it in the bank?
As soon as, as soon as we submit everything, we do.
Well, if I remember right, when you put the information up on the board, if you go with the 3 million gallon capacity, there's some possibility that that $4 million will disappear?
This means that...
No?
That will stay.
Pardon?
That will stay. The $4 million is given right now.
So are you saying, Ron, go ahead and do it no matter what it costs?
No, I'm not saying that.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Put a footprint on that and suggest that...
What I'm saying, I'm saying...
The USDA did not see the need for the 3 million. So they're saying if you build that, we may not receive the money based on the fact that we don't need it, correct? That's what that said.
That isn't the way I read that.
And that's what it said.
Said if they make it.
I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any chance that we're going to sacrifice the $4 million grant money or the loan money that they've already set aside, regardless of which way we go.
Anyhow, Ron, what we're trying to do is save every customer money. I don't want to have to add $20 to everyone's bill.
I don't want to pay for it.
Do you want to do it your way?
No.
We'll add it to it and just go ahead and do it?
No, but my concern is that you continue to delay taking action. We've already delayed nine years.
Do you want us to just vote?
How many more years are we going to delay? How much longer, how much longer is that water plant out there going to be capable of doing what it's doing?
Got a question. Do you want us to go ahead and vote to do it tonight and add it on your water bill?
I don't. You're going to make, pass an ordinance tonight, pass an increase on the water bill tonight?
No.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is...
If you want to, we'll vote tonight. We can vote, add it on your bill.
Call it Ron's bill.
We can call it Ron's bill. Disagree with our... You're going to find it hard to believe that I've been sitting here keeping my mouth shut, biting my tongue because I'm feeling a little ignorant on this water plant. But here's what my true thoughts are, and I, maybe we ought to think about this. These gentlemen come back, basically with the same thing they did before, cut back on the pipes and wells and what have you, okay? As I understand, and help me folks, this come in a while back, it was set the bid, the bid come out way over what they set. And what's going through my mind that I, because you guys know I'm pretty damn conservative, but what goes through my mind is maybe what they're saying is not going to change. Maybe we ought to go for bid and find out. That, you know, that I'm in agreement with Ron, how long we been screwing around with it? I don't imagine you gentlemen are going to change your numbers on us, are you?
They would if they came back with a different proposal.
But how long is that going to take?
We thought the last six months were enough.
Well, so do not, but that's either here or there.
I guess if there's a 4 percent increase every year to take six months to do these things, they can get an increase anyway, right?
Yeah.
They're not in much urgency.
You said there's really nothing else you can do, correct?
Only if you want a totally different water. I mean, as we discussed...
So your choice is totally different water, what you present.
There's not 50 different ways to treat the water. I mean, with all due respect.
I think that the original letter had at least three or four different types of choices to pursue. And I think you gave us one.
Anyhow, we'll work on it. Anytime, Ron, if you want us to vote, we can vote tonight, go ahead and do it and add it to your bill.
I don't, I'm not, I don't want to force you into a vote tonight. What I, what I am trying to emphasize is that there seems to be a tendency to the delay, 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 delay. And we've already delayed it nine years. And I just don't want to see the project, which is sorely needed, and you all know it's sorely needed. And you're going to have to do it sooner or later. And in my opinion, it's better to do it sooner. Because if you do it later, your cost is going to go up again. If you ask this gentleman to come in with another design, you're going to have another engineering bill. That's another $40,000, $50,000 or so, or whatever we paid for the first time.
$600,000.
600, oh, right. You know, there's an old saying that dollar here, dollar there, and pretty soon you're talking real money.
Okay, Ron, ask Lance how many times in the last three months I've been in asking when these guys are doing on water? What do you think?
Every Monday morning at 10:30.
Right.
You're a little late.
I'm asking every week.
I've been, I think I've been my point, and I think...
And we can take...
I don't want to belabor it any longer.
And I make the motion, rename it Ron's bill when we hear that. Ron and Chris.
I think the other thing to also keep in mind is, the council needs to be approved. We need to look at, we need to look at this. I know that, and I'm agreeing with what's at the same time, but, okay, if we make a decision and walk with the gun half-loaded instead of fully loaded, then fool us. And that's not fair to our citizens in the town.
Well, let me, let me, I didn't go all the way. What other alternative do we have? Does it do what they say? Yeah, right, we're saying right here, right now, what other alternative we have other than...